Morning and welcome to the Landmarks Preservation Commission's Public Hearing and Public Meeting of today, January 28. We will begin this morning by taking attendance. I'll ask our Deputy Counsel, John Weiss, to call the roll.
Chair Carroll.
Here.
Vice Chair Bland, Commissioner Chapin.
Here.
Commissioner Chen, Commissioner Chu.
Here.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Here.
Commissioner Goldblum, Commissioner Jefferson.
Here.
Commissioner Lutfi, Commissioner Master.
Here.
Good morning and welcome again to our Public Hearing and Public Meeting. This meeting is being held in our hearing room in person at One Center Street on the ninth floor. It is also being held via Zoom for anyone who would like to participate remotely and livestreamed on our YouTube channel. And we have a number of applications for work on designated properties to review today. And with that, I will turn it over to our Director of Preservation, Corey Harala, to take us through the agenda.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Good morning, everyone. We'll start today's Preservation Apartment Agenda with Public Hearing Item Number One, that's LPC 25-05588. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block 231, lot 19, 111 Hick Street in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. This is an apartment hotel building designed by Emory Roth and built in 1930, and the application is to replace windows.
I think we need Control hand it over to the screen.
Okay, yeah, wonderful. Excellent. Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Jack Ingles, I'm the hopefully future resident of the St. Georgetown. And I'm here with my architect, Davi Weber. So the building is located on Hick Street, 111 Hick Street, between Pineapple and Clark. It's a historical Emory Roth tower. It's designed in such a way, we've been trying to dig through like all the sort of evidence we could find of the building, but essentially the penthouse has been a mechanical space and as such has been designed with a sort of distinct characteristic. It changes the color of the brick. It has these kind of arch windows. So the upper two floors, 29 and 30, which is essentially the two floors that I'm here to ask about, are already distinguished with a sort of, almost like an architectural crown on top of the building. And because the mechanical systems of the building has been changed over time, it's now on CD grid, district heating, et cetera. The only thing that was remaining in the mechanical space was the water tanks, which is why we've been able to replace the water tanks and make the space inhabitable. So in making the space inhabitable, here you can see the arched windows, and you can see like a handful of rectangular windows on the upper two floors, you can see the change of material. And essentially, you have the upper portion, the 30th floor, in white. You can see the rectangular windows have a taller proportion, and you can see the windows immediately below on level 29 have a similar proportion. And then further down, they become sort of more stretched, and that's essentially the proportion throughout the rest of the building. So, and we believe, we haven't been able to find any kind of fully conclusive evidence, but we believe that probably the windows on the upper two floors where it used to be mechanical space never had glass. It was louvers, and that's why they have the different proportions. And that's why we believe we have a good argument to replace them without the double-hung windows. When you look at other Emory Roth buildings in New York, they all have this distinguished feature that the crown of the building has a different set of facades. They have had full openings without any fenestration because they were meant to ventilate a mechanical space. And I'm going to show the full elevation, and then I'm going to zoom in. It's, of course, it happens at the top of the building, so it's hard to make out, but on the north elevation, we don't make any changes. On the west elevation, there's, I don't know if it even shows in... Let me just point out. So essentially, we colored it with a light green where we have to replace the windows. The southern exposure, or the northern exposure, the southern exposure and the eastern exposure. And again, you can see two floors we're proposing to replace. Again, you can see that these two upper floors have slightly different proportions from the windows in the rest of the building, which is why we need that. There is an argument for replacing the windows, essentially that the windows currently, like these double-hung windows, they're totally destroyed, they have to be replaced. The insulation is gone, the glass is not even real glass in many places, it's a form of plexi. And we've already been through the condo board. The condo board is creating a facade master plan for the whole building. So our ask was to replace the windows, and instead of double-hung windows, make them hopper windows that swing in for safety and a sort of better technical solution. And then the building decided that we need to maintain the horizontal muntin on the 29th floor. I think with the argument that you have another tenant on the 29th floor, so for continuity. And then, of course, you have the two windows that end up corresponding with the stairwell further down in a kind of full square proportion. And you can see, these are the two types of windows. And essentially, the idea is to, on the right, you have the existing window, to replace it with a hopper window. And on the right, we are replacing it on the 29th with a hopper window with a horizontal muntin, and on the 30th floor without the horizontal. It essentially, from the outside, has the exact same appearance, very similar detail. We are adhering to the facade master plan of the building to use the same color that has been approved in the master plan. And then finally, from the street, you can see the upper floor, but when you look closer, because of the depth of the facade, you actually won't see the muntin or like the horizontal. It is something that happens 30 floors into the air. And I think it's very in line with the character of the existing building. And finally, sort of a series of views, and I'll move through it, I'll breeze through it, but essentially, the red line indicates where the two floors in question begin. And then, of course, you have a series of befores and afters. And again, when you're standing on the street itself, because of the angle, you can't see the horizontal mountains. And from a further distance, the sheer distance means that it becomes very, very difficult to see the befores and afters. But I'm showing you two sets of images. So we believe, like, maybe it seems like a very minor issue to spend the board's time on, but essentially, the, I would say, the point is that I believe we've been fully sort of respectful, and we're essentially doing something to make the space inhabitable, and both for comfort and for sustainability and for safety. So I think that maybe wraps it up.
Thank you. Did we have any questions, Commissioners? All right, not seeing any questions, we'll move to public testimony, and I'll note that there is no one in the hearing room to speak on this item, so I'll turn it over to Gregory Collet to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. We have one remote participant with their hand raised, that being Judy Stanton from the Brooklyn Heights Association. Judy Stanton, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Judy Stanton for the Brooklyn Heights Association. I'm going to need to shout, I'm sitting next to a construction site, so you may not hear me well. We think this application should be revised to conform to the LPC-approved window master plan for this building. It appears that all of the window openings in this application are covered by the master plan, and we were surprised to see that the application only refers to the colors approved in the master plan and does not provide an explanation for why other variances from the master plan, such as to materials and design, are necessary or desirable. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any additional attendees with their hands raised, so I will note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Two recommends approval. And with that, I'll bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
Thank you. So we heard some testimony that seemed confused about the multiple window types, and I know that you were trying to work with the condo board, and also, I think, the windows that were, that are lower and correspond to other windows would still have the appearance of a double-hung, and then the windows above would be single-pane. Was that the approach?
Yes, and also, I might add, we've gone through this with the COA Board, who has approved this in accordance with the master plan of the facade. And we've also presented it to the Community Board of Brooklyn Heights, that also unanimously approved it. So I think we've tried to take every point of view and every organization into account.
Okay.
And it is true that from the 28th floor and down, all the windows are the same, but on the 29th and the 30th, they are actually the same to each other and different from the rest of the building. It also means that when you have the vertical proportion of the 28th floor and further down, you actually end up with portrait formats on the two glass pieces, but because they're slightly shorter on 29 and 30, you end up with a kind of landscape proportion, which I think looks a bit odd. I think, I don't know if I have control still, but if we zoom in a tiny bit.
Because the windows are shorter.
But I can't shift either. All right, I got enough. I think you can, we have... Yeah, but you don't see the ones further down. Maybe I go to the, I think we had, maybe picture or close. Oh, here you go. Beautiful. So here you can just see that all the windows from 28th and down are more vertical, which means that with the horizontal, you end up with two portrait format windows, but because of the broad compressed format of 29 and 30, because 29 and 30 were the pad floors, once you have the horizontal subdivision, you end up with a landscape proportion, which I think is alien to the entire architecture. It would be strange, like at that close house, you suddenly have landscape proportion, piece of glass, they would always be portrait. So we do believe that it actually is better and more aligned with the studies of the architecture, once we eliminate the horizontal.
Okay, yes. Commissioner Ginsburg.
You don't have any historic photos, tax photos. Did you look for those, or what?
Yeah, exactly. We've tried, we do have very few, as you saw in the presentation. Let me see. We've actually, both the building, when they did the master plan, has been to various archives. Davi has been sort of searching through what we could find, but all the photos are taken from a distance where the resolution is what it is.
Thank you.
Yeah, the tax photo might have been a streetscape photo and not a... All right, other questions? All right, let's move to our discussion. Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Don't move.
Thank you. Commissioner Chu, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we're looking at replacing the windows at the top two floors, which historically were one-over-one double-hung windows. The applicant has pointed out that those windows get smaller at the top two floors, and specifically, the top floor windows are in a building where there is a demarcation in the facade and a different treatment at the top with the large multi-light windows, which also included louvers historically. So the proposal is to do a hopper in-swinging window with a false muntin bar at the floor that corresponds to the other window openings, and then single-pane windows at the upper floor. And the applicant has shown the very, the close-up views, it's difficult to perceive the configuration of the windows, and the long views are from great distances where you see it in, with only portions of the building in the context. So Commissioner Ginsburg, would you like to start this one?
Okay. So in general, I think this is fine. It's so high from such a distance, the windows have a different proportion or in a different facade. I'd also add, from an energy perspective, these are better than double-hung because you'll get a tighter seal. So I think this is appropriate, and I can approve it.
Commissioner Chapin?
I think it's a fairly minor intervention, and it's, you know, I think it'll be well done working with the staff, and I don't think it's going to be perceptible at this height, the small change, so I can approve it as presented.
Commissioner Chu?
I agree with my fellow commissioners. I think that a very subtle difference in the fact that the existing top of the building does have a white brick face does warrant slight difference in those windows. So I think this is approvable.
Commissioner Master?
I agree, it's appropriate.
Commissioner Chapin?
Very clear architectural analysis, and I agree.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
I was kind of expecting a ski slope, but in the absence of anything more dynamic, I think this is totally appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you make the motion?
With regards to LPC 25-05588, 111 Hick Street, Brooklyn Heights Historic District, an apartment hotel building designed by Emory Roth and built in 1930, application is to replace windows. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the existing steel windows are deteriorated and warrant this replacement, that the proposed aluminum hopper windows will recall the details of the historic windows and the material and finish will be consistent with the replacement windows previously approved by the building's wide master plan, that the windows are located high on the building tower elements and are only seen from a distance or at a severe angle. Therefore, the change in operation at all windows and changes in configuration at the 30th floor and elevator lobby windows will not be readily perceptible or call undue attention to themselves. Therefore, I recommend approval.
All right. Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
John, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
Seven in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, that's approved. Thank you. You two, we'll move to the next item.
Next item is Public Hearing Item Number Two, LPC 25-03477. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 592, lot 55, 156 Waverly Place in the Greenwich Village Historic District. This is a Greek Revival-style townhouse built in 1839, and the application is to construct a rooftop addition, modify and reconstruct the rear facade, excavate the cellar and rear yard, replace windows, and legalize the installation of a stoop gate without LPC permits.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me? My name is John Gordon with Sook Design Studio Architecture. With me also is Andrea Yoswursh and Bill Sook. We're presenting this morning 156 Waverly Place. So this is in the West Village. You can see the district map. Waverly Place actually has a bifurcate at this location, actually. It goes sort of north, but it also continues along around the more east-west portion of Waverly, and part of a row of, whoops, too far, row of eight houses. You can see the sort of bird's eye view from the map, and then the map showing the context of the block with the townhouses that are remaining in our row, and there are two townhouses still on Washington Place on the opposite side. But generally, the middle portion of the block is only having rear yards with these townhouses that remain. These are the tax photos from the 1940s. Took a few of the other ones on either side of it as well to show the context and referencing the historic designation report. Take note that the, we were going to propose restorations to the facade. I know that's not for the commission necessarily, it's with staff, but the door lintel is missing now. You can see it here. This is a context of collage of photos from today. And the house, I don't know if I have a pointer, but let's see the cursor. This one right here, yep, that's the house. That's one of the two that are a bit shorter than the rest. Those are photos showing the context of the existing condition of the house and visibility as you move down. The first photo on the left is as you move up the Waverly in the northern section of it, and then the middle photo is sort of a dead-on photo, and you can see the close-up of the door, the lintel is missing, which we plan to restore, and you see the stoop gate, which we're presenting. We'd like to legalize the stoop gate. Just of note on that, you can see that the railings themselves and the gate, they match, they have a similar pattern where there's a straight spindle and then a twisted spindle alternating in a pattern. So there's relationship as far as the way those are set up. It's not a different language. Here's the existing proposed elevation, so you can see the conditions we mentioned about the door and the stoop gate, but also here, we're starting to see the proposed bulkhead at the roof. And you can see in the existing, you know, there's various flues which we're removing, and then Neighbor has its own bulkhead there, too, you can see for reference. This is the accident metric from the front, showing the existing proposed, showing the bulkhead proposed, and mechanical equipment is mounted at the back corner, so as we're trying to keep it as far away from visibility as possible in the staircase for access. And just to reference back to the topic of the gate, we're presenting four townhouses in the neighborhood with the location map that were approved by the commission, and the fifth, all the way to the right, was legalized by the commission. This is the rendering of the front facade elevation. And then, moving to the rear facade, you can see the house isn't the last one in the row, but the very last one in the row is quite different than the rest, but our 156 is very similar to 154 as far as there's an existing extension on the lower floors. And this rear wall, as you can see, has actually different bricks and feels like it's been infilled in different areas. You can see a very prominent line of change of brick from here to here. These must have been built or filled in at different times. There's also a lot of through-wall ACs in the lower portion and various changes. There's also this pretty hideous flue coming up the back, and it runs across the existing terrace at this point and keeps going up and removing that in our proposal. The zoomed-out view gives you more context of how it relates to the neighbor houses. And then this, there's more pictures of this coming up, but this is the back top level of the roofline as it meets the neighbor's house, and there's not really much of a cornice per se. There's either like a woodboard or aluminum, like lashing that just runs behind the gutter. Otherwise, it's just straight brick, just the neighbor has just straight brick wall going up as well. So these are close-ups if we're standing on that terrace, looking back up at the wall and looking in each direction to see its condition in relation to the other houses. You can see the top four windows, and you're starting to see the mockup, back end of the mockup visible at the back, which is set back from the back facade. And then other parts of the wall, the lower portions of this wall are just coated, if you can see here, it's just coated with like a tar waterproofing, which obviously be removed. Those are the elevations, existing and proposed, of the back of the house. So we're proposing the bulkhead, which you can see at the top. We're also proposing to change the top three windows to bring their sill lower so that we can get better light and air into the top floor. The line of that roofline in that dash is staying at the same point. You can see the dash line carrying across from the, between the two elevations. And otherwise, we're reworking the large openings, somewhat keeping in the same vein of a smaller opening on the left and a larger opening on the right for those lower, the first and second floor. And then the lowest floor, we're opening it up completely, so. This is the rendering of that facade. And the facade stays in the same position, it's not being pushed further back. And these are the site plans, existing proposed, you can see the changes at the roof level, roof terrace, there's a stair up on top of the bulkhead and the equipment in the back. And this is the push, this is set back here from the existing top floor facade line, this proposed facade is set back at this point. Moving to the, these are renderings, front and back, so you can see the proposal from both sides. And moving to the topic of the sightline and excavation we're proposing, this is the existing section of the house. It says pitched roof. And then, moving to the proposed, you can see the bulkhead is added with the equipment in the back, as we've talked about. And then, in the excavation, the existing sub-cellar floor, we're just lowering an existing part by one foot, but then we'd like to excavate the backyard, so it's a full-floor excavation, so it's about 12 feet of excavation, but we're maintaining the back five feet of the yard as unexcavated. Moving to materials, as mentioned, we plan to restore the front facade. We are proposing that the front windows be planted black trim. I forgot to show you on the historic maps, but the photos in the historic tax photos show that all the windows on the row actually seem to be a dark, very dark color, in our opinion, probably black. And then the materials on the right half for the addition, the back facade brickwork, and rear windows will have a black metal frames, and then the penthouse, we proposed to, or bulkhead proposed to clad and zinc panels. And now we can move to visibility studies. View A, you're standing pretty much directly across the street, right where the street is bifurcating, see the red dot there? You can see the mockup in these two photos. The front is the railing, and that is the guardrail we're putting in for the roof terrace, which you can see in the rendering. And further back is the, what you really see here is the railing. And further back is the, what you really see here is the railing at the bulkhead. And we made it, we actually made it a bit opaque for this rendering, so it's very clear what it is. So it's shown white here instead of, you know, it's glass, so it proposes glass, so it'll be see-through, but still want to call it out to make sure you're aware of what it is and where it is. Moving to the next. Now, we're moving down the street in the second location, moving north to the corner. And you can see much further back, but there is more visibility here. But you're starting to see in this spot, the neighbor's bulkhead and the proposed bulkhead are here in relation to each other. The proposed is a bit lower and a little bit forward. And you can see the front railing for the terrace and then the railing in glass that I mentioned. Moving to point C, we crossed the street, and we're a little bit further back from the corner at this spot here. And this is the change in the visibility. We're in the unfortunate location of being right at the end of the street, so there's a lot of visibility. Can't help that. But if you stand, this is the dispensary, the triangular building, which I'm sure you're aware of, and that's the location here, and it's not really visible here. You see there, you can't see any of the mock-up here. And then at this, right when you're getting the front corner of the dispensary, you're not seeing it, but if you go a little bit further, you'll start seeing the first top of that mock-up right there. And just showing the mock-up when we're on the roof, so you can see it. So this is, this is standing inside the mock-up. This larger volume represents the equipment. It should be in the back corner. So we're looking, we're looking south here in this photo. And then this is the opposite view looking north here. Yeah, and then we added some photos, and if you're standing in the back or looking at, like this one here is the neighbor's roof right next to the townhouse. I guess that's 158. And then this is looking into the backyard. This is the backyard right here of 156, the backyard of 158. And then looking the other direction, you have these backyards. And here, you can see these two townhouses that are on Washington Place. There's, you know, a little carriage house, and they have all manner of updates in their rear facades. And then just going to the... And this, this is the existing plans and proposed plans, showing we're not changing the position of the back wall. Just close out with the renderings again, front and back. Thank you. Let me know if you have questions.
Yes, we do. Commissioner Goldblum?
Yeah, just... Question about the layout on the fifth floor. Could you go to the, I guess it's the floor plans?
Yep.
Here we go. So I take it you're putting in an elevator opposite the stair?
Yes.
And that elevator, its top floor is the fourth floor?
Right.
And then you have a stair, then you have a stair going above it?
Yep.
On the fifth floor?
Yep.
And that's gonna, is there, there's no concern with overrun or anything like that?
Yeah, we're using one of these slower-speed elevators, so the overrun's much less. If you have a high-speed elevator, you have to have a big overrun, so...
And the placement of the front wall of the rooftop addition?
Right.
Is that generated by the configuration of the stair?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, keeping that line, you can see it lines up with the stair position.
Right, but it's actually forward a little bit of the bulkhead next door.
Of the elevator bulkhead? Oh, of the bulkhead of the neighbor's?
The guy, the neighbor's bulkhead.
Yes, it's a little bit forward, yep.
Thanks.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
So I just want to make sure. I've got two questions. There are two reasons you're creating the bulkhead. One is to create a double-height space in the rear room.
Right.
And the other is to create the stair up to the roof.
Yeah.
Right. Now, also, the stair clearance is listed at eight foot three. My understanding is code only requires six foot eight?
I believe it's at least seven on a stair.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, let's move to public testimony, and I'll note that there is no one in the hearing room to speak, so I will turn it over to Gregory Kala to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. We have a few remote participants with their hands raised. The first we'll be hearing from is Christina Conroy from the Victorian Society in New York. Christina Conroy, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, the proposal before you has many different aspects. Unfortunately, the BSNY supports only the work proposed for the lower three floors of the rear facade. The top-floor addition the applicants are showing is the most egregious component. The mock-up clearly demonstrates that it will be partially visible over the primary facade from across the street. It will also be clearly visible from multiple locations on the west. But what's more troubling is that this highly-visible add-on doesn't really add living space to the house. It's essentially an empty box. The front portion, 45% of this blocky enclosure, is an open stairwell and bridge giving access to the front entrance. The rear portion, 55%, is open space, a two-story ceiling for the lounge on the fourth floor. The proposed section on Board 17 shows the 19-foot ceiling this would provide in the lounge. Now, eliminating the two-story ceiling at the rear and providing a sloped roof over the front, over the stair at the front, would dramatically reduce this visibility. It would also allow for a larger roof terrace at the fifth floor. The front railing could then be set back, minimizing the visibility of this element. The stoop gate is just as troubling. The photos the applicant has provided shows that many of the immediate neighbors have no gates. The illegal gate must be removed. We will once again recommend the use of a chain to close off a stoop. Now, at the rear facade, we strongly object to the enlargement of the historic fourth-floor window openings. The historic brickwork and openings should remain as they are. Equally troubling is the string of the featureless windows above which would light the 19-foot ceiling in the lounge. Now, modifying the proposed fifth-floor addition, as stated in our earlier comments, would eliminate those featureless windows. Now, we acknowledge that this would change the user's experience of the lounge, but in a house that is designated with a playroom, a living room, a sitting room, a library, and a study, it seems that skylights might suffice in the lounge. We look forward to seeing a revised proposal for 156 Waverly Place, which would eliminate all of these troubling elements. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Chloe Gregoire from the Village Preservation. Chloe Gregoire, I've promoted you to panelist. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good day, Commissioners. My name is Chloe Gregoire, and I'm speaking on behalf of Village Preservation. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. This rooftop addition is too substantial. We urge you to require that the design be modified to completely eliminate visibility over the primary facade and to significantly reduce visibility over the side. We are also concerned about the extent of excavation and feel that this scope should be reduced. According to the plans, the rooftop addition will create a double-height space, and the cellar is being expanded primarily for the purpose of additional storage space. We don't think either of these uses should take priority over the safety of the building or retention of visual integrity at the street gate. Finally, while we can accept a stoop gate here if it is required for tenant safety, we were dismayed to see it installed without LPC review. These applicants clearly understand the Landmarks Preservation Commission approval process and should not have installed a gate without following the proper procedure. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Lucy Levine from the Historic District Council. Lucy Levine, I've promoted you to panelist. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic District Council. HTC appreciates the applicant's desire to visually match the color of the proposed rooftop addition to the building's distinctive white corner. But we believe the addition, which is visible at a distance, would more readily recede into the background if it were rendered in a more muted tone. Further, we feel the glass is an, we feel that glass is an inappropriate, inappropriately reflective material for the proposed rooftop railing and believe an open metal rail would be more appropriate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any other attendees with their hands raised. If you would like to speak on this item, please click the raise hand button now. Okay, noting that I do not see any hands raised, I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board II recommends approval of the sensitive restoration of the sole surviving front facade in the row and the stoop gate, approval of the basement excavation and underpinning provided that all regulations are followed with respect to engineering studies, best practices for construction, and monitoring to ensure the integrity of the building and adjacent property, approval with the reservations of the excavation of the rear yard for which mature trees were removed before there was consideration of the application, denial of the rooftop addition detailed in Whereas Eye as blatantly visible from the public thoroughfare in a district where it is widely known that the longstanding policy is that such addition must be minimally visible from all public thoroughfare, and that the commission, in view of the applicant's willful and excessive misrepresentation of the visibility of the rooftop addition, not hold a hearing with respect to any alternate proposal until it has been reviewed by CB2 Landmarks Committee with a full mock-up and accurate photographs of the visibility. We also received three separate letters from individuals recommending denial. And with that, I'll bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
Okay, so I'd like to turn to you and ask if you'd like to respond to any of the comments we've heard.
Sure. Can I respond to the excavation topic? Of course, anytime we propose excavation, we follow all the regulations and procedures for safety. It's critically important for everybody, so...
And I would note, this is, this application is undergoing our...
Enhanced engineering.
Enhanced engineering. Looking for that word, enhanced engineering review, and Don Friedman has engaged the applicant already.
Yep, we've submitted everything. As well, we know that there's another townhouse that's had similar excavation approved in the past by the commission at 109 Waverly, so we see that as a precedent. It's important, you know, like I said, that we just follow safety procedures and good engineering practices, and then it's all possible to do. It's been proven many times. So as far as the comments about the mock-up and visibility, I believe when we presented to the community board twice, and when we went the first time, the mock-up wasn't fully finished. We acknowledge that. But when we went the second time, it was completely finished. And we put extra photos in the presentation to make it clear when the mock-up shows exactly what's being proposed in the design. So that visibility, like I said, we acknowledge it's visible from across the street. It's just the condition of the street, way the street bifurcates, and you can just walk down the northernly spur of Waverly and Seymour, so... We made that clear in our visibility study. What were the other topics?
So in terms of the visibility, and you are right at the end of where the street ends, kind of right where your house is, and it's lower than the others. But because it's lower than the others from those views, is that addition then, I was gonna say, is it seen against the backdrop of the adjacent bulkhead? But, so it looks like your bulkhead is a little shorter, but the railing is a little taller.
Yeah, so I can, yeah, I can explain. In the mock-up, there's a horizontal line here that represents the edge of the proposed bulkhead, which you can see here. The mouse not working? Sorry. To click. Yeah, now, so this line here, that's the, there, laser's better. That's the line of the proposed bulkhead. And then the mock-up above that is the glass railing. So then when you switch the rendering, you can see that. That's, that's line. It's lower than the neighbor's bulkhead. And then the glass, the glass does go above, but that's why we proposed glass.
So you do see it in the context of another bulkhead in that same view, but is your, I mean, I don't know if you, did you choose glass to minimize visibility, or did you think about a cable wire?
We chose glass.
Is there an opportunity to set it back more?
We can look into that.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Can you address the fact that the stoop gate was put in without permission? And why that was, given that the applicant clearly understands they need to come to Landmarks?
Yeah, I believe the, I, the, our client did not put the gate in. The gate has been there, and you can see that it's relationship to the railings. I mean, I could switch to that.
Thank you.
That violation dates to 2021, so it's 25 years old, if not older.
Not 2021.
Sorry, 2001. My mistake. And again, sometimes violations are actually issued after the work's been done. So I think the point is that this was installed long before the current, or in the building.
I don't know if you could see, but like I had mentioned, there's a straight spindle. I think there's two, and then one twisted spindle, and that's the pattern. And it's the same in the gate, so this railing on the side and the gate pattern are the same. I mean, maybe they were just imitating it when they put it in, but there's a relationship there.
Okay, and can you, so you're in a block of houses, other row houses. Do they all have stoops, and do they have, are there gates, or there a variety of conditions along the street?
Here, so you can see, not all of them have stoops, but most do. The one on the end here does not, like you enter into the garden model in that house, but these all have stoops. This one here has a gate over here. Oh, it's a mix.
Yeah, I just want to ask about the windows.
Yeah, Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, the window frames, most of the, currently, and most, on most of the buildings, they're a light color. Why did you choose to change to a darker color? Is there some historical reason?
Yes, and when I was on the tax photos, I neglected to show it to you, but you could see, everything is, I can't zoom in, everything is very dark. You know, 158, 154, they have black frames, so...
Right, and so I think as a Greek Revival-style row house, it would have historically had a white finish. That would have been typical, especially given the ornament on the building. But the building obviously has underwent alterations, and by the tax photo, it has a darker finish.
On that same topic, are you proposing to paint the cornice a dark color, like it's showing in the tax photo?
No, we would like to keep that white.
So what do you think about that? The fact that you're using the tax photo for the windows but not for the cornice? Is that the right way to go? Tell me why.
I, I feel that the cornice is such tremendous character, and it's also, you know, it's specifically mentioned in the designation report. I think it's got such great character and presence that I think changing it to black would be...
Yet, yet, do you think that your windows in black, which obviously are part of that cornice, are consistent with that importance, in your opinion?
I think there's also like just a materiality of it, like if there's that much material, and this is all wood material?
Yeah.
If it's all black, I feel like when something's painted black, it's more likely to deteriorate faster just because of the conditions, the way the sun hits it.
Why are you painting your windows black?
But there's a small amount of material in the windows compared to that.
Still, someone's got to get out there and paint them. Whatever.
Yeah.
You're definitely into those suggestions.
Bill, can you just introduce yourself for the record, too?
My name is Bill Sook. We'd be, we'd be happy to take the recommendations of the, of the commission and look into painting that a darker color to match the windows.
Okay, Commissioner Chu?
Sorry, this was covered earlier when we were talking about the structure of the existing house, but the rear upper floors have to be rebuilt. We know that.
And are you reconstructing the, all of the rear facades on the addition and the upper two floors? And the condition of the upper floors of the rear facade is... And the condition of the upper floors, the rear facade is?
Not in a good shape. It's cracking a lot and there's been a lot of penetrations. As John mentioned, there are through, through the wall air conditioning units. And several places, there's a huge flue on the left-hand side. It's not in great shape.
That one section is completely covered in tar and usually, tar usually deteriorates quicker faster.
There's no documents of that existing condition.
There's just the.
This, you show us, just the pictures.
This is the close up of the upper levels and then the other photos are the back here.
I'm sorry. Can you go back one?
This one?
Those, those are the upper floors?
Yeah, that, that top row windows and then you can see the mockup above it. And then the ones like right in front of the cameraman is the windows at the terrace. You can see standing on the terrace here, see my mouse?
Yeah.
Standing on the terrace here, these lower windows, that's the tar all the way above the windows still even. These are the upper windows, this fourth floor, third floor. That's the bulkhead, mockup up there.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, we're gonna move to public testimony. Did I do that? I already did that, sorry. If there are other questions, then we'll move to our discussion. So Commissioner Chu, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
And Commissioner Master, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing is closed. So we have a number of components to look at in this application. One is at the front, the legalization of the stoop gate. And the applicant has shown us the context in the street scape and the details of that gate. The painting of the windows a black color. And then the, at the roof, we have the rooftop addition and the railing and then the railing on top of the rooftop addition, which are all visible from the west, I believe. And then at the rear, the reconstruction of the rear facade and the alterations of the window, to the window openings. So we'll begin our discussion, Commissioner Goldblum, you'd like to start this one.
Okay, thanks. I think that the bulk of the rear yard addition is acceptable. I have no concerns about the excavation as long as it's being done under the normal procedures. I think that the rear wall of the existing building that is to be rebuilt should be examined carefully with staff. And if staff believe that it is unsalvageable, then it can be rebuilt with salvaged materials. But I definitely think the windows on the top floor should not change. And the details, to the extent that they can be preserved and restored. I think that the, the volume of the rooftop addition is problematic. I think that the.
One moment, is the rooftop addition is the same volume as the existing, correct? Is that right? No, okay.
I think, I think that, you know, it's, it's a funny, you know, it is a a very large addition that has very little in it. And as such, I think it, you know, and it's very visible, on a very visible block in, in a very important district. So I, I think that we should make efforts to reduce its visibility. Some suggestions that they can work on with staff. Number one, tighten up the stair for the last run. That'll allow you to move the wall back so that it aligns with the bulkheads next door. Number two, have the finish of the material not be so light. If you look at the photos, the visibility, the fact that it's a light color, I think makes it stand out more. Number three, you have a glass railing that is protecting a bank of skylights, which one would hope are not to be walked on. I think that they could modify the roof design, perhaps by sloping it. It's not a, you know, it's a service roof. It's not a, it's not a roof to hang out on evidently. It's not shown that way anyway. So theoretically, you could put the railing further back and either, you know, slope the front a little bit or, you know, somehow, you know, as Mark said, it's, it's basically a bulkhead. Bulkheads have a seven foot or even less clearance. It's at eight foot three. I think all of these suggestions together would allow for it to be minimized and set back so that it aligns with the other bulkheads in the row. You could also flip that stair to the other side, which would reduce the visibility because then the, the bulkhead would be up against a higher building. In turn, and in, in terms of the paint colors, I think that, that they should just paint them white. It's just silly not to.
Thank you, Commissioner Ginsburg.
So I basically agree with everything Commissioner Goldblum said and want to add the following. There's too much glass. And so the rear yard, the third floor, if the window was broken up like the first and second floor, I think it would be better. I agree, the windows should remain the same size. The whole bulkhead, first of all, you can drop more than a foot by just lowering the clearance of the stair. There may be ways to drop it more. And then the windows could become angled skylights and reduce the visibility of it. The other thing that Commissioner Goldblum didn't talk about was the stoop gate, which I think is acceptable if modified. First of all, it's now higher than the railing next to it. It should be aligned or slightly lower. And second of all, the spacing of the verticals does not seem to match the side railing. It's hard to tell because there's no straight on photograph. But if you're modifying it, I would also make that spacing match the side railing. With those changes, I don't know if it should come back to us or, yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Chapin.
Yes, I agree with my fellow commissioners. With Commissioner Goldblum with suggestions regarding reducing the rooftop addition. And I also noted that the, I think the rendering shows the color is lighter than they show it in the presentation. But nonetheless, it's a zinc, a light colored zinc, and it could be darker. Needs to be more separated from the color of the cornice to recede further as well as the other changes that, you know, were recommended to try to reduce the, the appearance of the volume and the actual volume. Also, I agree on the light color of the window frames on the front and the retention of the top floor windows in the back. And I think I agree with Commissioner Ginsburg's remarks regarding the stoop gate.
All right, Commissioner Chu.
Yes, I'm in agreement with almost all my fellow commissioners' comments. I, I think the, the biggest element here is, is the rooftop addition and it feels out of scale. I even think that one of the recommendations of looking at a sloped condition, I think is appropriate. It might recall more historic studio of skylight because of its scale and visibility frontally. I think we, they need to look, relook at it. And I think it's achievable. Color agreed, probably wants to recede as opposed to come forward. I also feel that the windows should be white to match the cornice. The top railing of, of the mechanical surround glass does not seem appropriate. And that the stoop railing should be lower, as mentioned by Mark earlier. And that the rear facade, when I look at it, I, I can see the waterproofing that's been brought up onto the facade. But if I look at the proposed, it's replacing all that with doors. So I don't see why that's a challenge. Most of what's, what looks like is, is, would be remain, would, would be retained, looks in decent condition. So I do think they need to look again with staff as to why those upper, most of the couldn't be retained. Also because I feel that the windows in the upper floor should remain the existing size. So just keeping that piece would, would probably do it. I think that covers.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Master.
Yeah, I'm generally in agreement with all the other comments. Commissioner Ginsburg, I agree with his comments regarding the stoop gate. I think that it's a good idea to paint the windows black on the front facade, or paint them white to match the cornice because it does look a little bit odd, the white cornice kind of sticks out. I agree with Commissioner Goldblum that the bulkhead is too visible and the volume is too big. I think that they can certainly reduce the visibility. And in terms of reconstructing the rear facade, I think that the footprint and the massing of the rear facade is fine. I do agree that we should do a little bit more exploration as to whether the top two floors have to be reconstructed. And keeping the fenestration as it is now, I think makes a lot of sense. And it's what we typically do. And I think that the excavation is fine.
Commissioner Jefferson.
I was taken by the, the building itself, it's special on that block, it's a special building. And then I was thinking about the context of it. Context is everything because if this was anywhere else, we would accept the bulkhead and they accept the addition. But because of where it is, it's difficult. I agree with everything all my fellow commissioners said and I think their advice is well taken.
Okay, great. All right, so we're not going to take an action today. We have had a lot of comments and a lot of pretty direct suggestions. So I think it shouldn't take you that long to come back to us with a revised proposal. And we'll see you then. Thank you, and we'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number three, LPC twenty-four dash zero nine seven four eight. This is an application for an amendment. It's in the Row Manhattan Block two thirty-two Lot twenty-one, thirty to thirty-two Howard Street in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. A neo-grec style building designed by J.B. Snook and built in eighteen sixty-eight. The application is to legalize the removal of shutter pintles and installation of a stucco system at the rear facade and non-compliance with Certificate of Appropriateness seventeen dash thirty-five forty-one.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jordan Doyak. I work at Spear Street Capital, the current owner of thirty-two Howard Street, shown here on the screen. I'm here today to request approval of the removal of shutter pintels, which were removed from the prior owner of the building and the installation of a stucco system at the rear facade of the building. To give some background, thirty-two Howard is located at the corner of Howard and Crosby Street in Soho. The building was constructed together with the neighboring building thirty Howard in eighteen sixty-eight by J.B. Snook in the neo-grec style. The two buildings, thirty and thirty-two Howard, have matching facades, the cast iron base and stone upper floors. Thirty-two Howard was historically the home of the Putnam Ladder Company from nineteen seventeen until the early twenty-teens. The two buildings have undergone a series of improvements and expansions beginning in twenty fifteen with a certificate of appropriateness for the construction of an extension at the rear facade and roof of the building, including a full new six-floor penthouse. The property has changed hands twice since the twenty fifteen permit, most recently in late October twenty twenty-three, when we at Spear Street acquired the building after major renovations were largely completed. As new owners in late twenty twenty-three, we filed for a notice of compliance on all of work completed since twenty fifteen and identified two areas of work that diverged from the approvals. Both areas are located at the non-visible rear facade. This includes, as I mentioned before, the installation of a stucco system for the full height of the wall and the removal of fire shutter pintles that were done by the prior owner. These completed conditions are shown as is. Upon recognizing that this work was not approved in accordance with LPC protocol, we're now moving quickly to have this corrected and engage with the LPC staff on the proper procedure. So we are asking for approval for the work completed as is and shown here. Great attention has been paid to the building over the course of the work since two thousand and fifteen with the intent to make repairs and maintain the functionality and longevity of the building evident in the pre and post-work photos shown here. This included the installation of a new storefront infill at thirty-two Howard, as you can see here in twenty twenty, to match the existing historic fabric. There have been a lot of positives about the redevelopment. This ground floor storefront that has been completed at thirty-two Howard, as you can see, has now been leased by SHOT, a leather motorcycle jacket brand that was founded in nineteen thirteen in New York City and has opened their store here. On this slide, you'll see photos of the rear facade. These photos were taken in two thousand and seventeen. Prior to the work starting, the existing rear facade was brick, which showed evidence of multiple campaigns of repair work, including possibly a previous coating. The fire shutters were no longer in place, although a handful of the pintels remained. And the rear facades, as you can see on the bottom right floor plan, are entirely enclosed within the block and are not visible from any of the surrounding streets, Crosby, Howard, or Broadway. This photo shows elevations that are taken from the approved drawings in twenty eighteen, showing the facades within the rear facade courtyard, the rear courtyard. Approvals included new windows, mechanical louvers, retention of the pintels, the stucco clad extension at the roof in the south elevation, and the full height extension off the rear in the west elevation. At the time of these drawings, the previous owner had identified the need for repairs and waterproofing at the brick elevations. So the scope also included repointing of the full brick elevation. Repointing of the brick was approved here, given the deteriorated conditions of the brick. The team had acknowledged that repairs were certainly necessary. Unfortunately, the baseline repointing that was done was not enough to solve the water issue at the building. As we were nearing closing of the acquisition of the property in twenty twenty-three, it became evident to us that there were significant water issues going into the stairs of the north-facing wall. Water was pouring in from the ceiling anytime there was even moderate rainfall. This issue persisted after our ownership and water continued to flow into the building during rain events. These are just a handful of photos from the rear stairwell at thirty-two Howard. We had even more photos and videos, but our prior property manager from CBRE left the company and deleted the photos from her phone. But this paints a pretty solid picture of the water pouring in. These photos document the existing conditions at the rear facade at the time that we acquired the property. As you can see, part of the rear facade on this wall had already been stuccoed on the bottom. The facade had been repointed and a lot of the pintels had already been removed. Given the significant water infiltration issues, despite the repointing and previous repair campaigns, it was determined that the best course of action was to install the stucco system on the remaining exposed facade to make it watertight. The completed work, excuse me. The completed work fully weatherproofed and insulated the rear facade. The finish is consistent with the approved finish at the rear and rooftop additions as well. We had really good intentions and simply wanted to make the building watertight and stop the consistent harmful leaks. But we are certainly regretful that there was not, that there was miscommunication, that the LPC process was not fully followed prior to the work getting completed. But we are now making every effort since to correct that and have the process cleaned up with LPC. We are owners of other buildings in New York City, including six thirty-five, six forty-one Avenue Americas, four forty-six Broadway around the corner, and soon to be another building in Soho that we are closing on in February, and previously three fifteen Park Ave South. We have always followed any and all LPC rules and procedures to a T, especially at six thirty-five, six forty-one Avenue Americas, where we've done substantial renovation work at the historic buildings. And we are certainly regretful that that was not followed at thirty-two Howard. So this is just a comparison slide showing the rear facade before and after the work that was completed. This is a quick visibility study. And just to reiterate, that the rear elevations are entirely enclosed within the rear block and they are not visible over the two-store footlocker from Broadway or any other angle into the building. So in conclusion, you know, our primary goal is to be good stewards of the building. We took quick action to resolve an issue that was threatening the health of the building. And although proper process unfortunately was not followed, we want to put our best foot forward and resolve this issue. Overall, the repair work was effective and we have not had any water leaks since the work was done. The facade where the work was completed is not visible from any of the surrounding streets and was completed to match areas that were prior approved by the commission to have a stucco finish. And lastly, we believe that this will ensure the longevity and safety of the historic building. Thank you.
Thank you. And just, I'm looking at the block plan and it looks like you're, you're to, you're building a butts almost the side facade of the building facing Broadway or Crosby. So even from within the rear yard.
So even from within the rear yards, there isn't, is there any much visibility? It looks very tight there.
Yeah, there's very, very limited visibility and no visibility from any street to a pedestrian.
Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Ginsburg?
You said something, I'm not sure. Did you put insulation under the stucco over the brick?
Tony, do you want to give some detail? This is Tony Zagraffus from CBRE Property Management.
Just come up to the microphone. We're on Zoom, and so the Zoom participants can only
Tony Zagraffus, CBRE? Yes, it's a product that has a little insulation and waterproofing and adhesion prior to the stucco going on. It's a system.
But you didn't put in any board insulation between the stucco and the brick?
There is a miniature piece of board.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Yes, Commissioner Chu.
Understand all the images. When I look at those photos, if you could go back to the That's fine. There's two window bays, right? When I look at the plan, there's an elevator that slides behind this elevator shaft. Is that
Yeah, to the left of the
It looks like it's a single locked up, but in fact, there's a gap.
Yeah, there's a slight gap and behind
And that's all been stuccoed over.
No, the part to the left of the window line you see has not been touched.
So you left existing brick in that slot right to the left of this?
Yeah, that section of the wall was not having any water infiltration issues into the rear stairwell. So that remains as is.
I guess that makes Mark's comment about insulation a bit obsolete. It's not full coverage.
It's a very slim opening behind that wall. It would be very hard to get back there.
Okay, other questions? All right, we'll move to public testimony, and I'll note there is no one in the hearing room to speak on this item. So I'll turn it over to Gregory to see if we have remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carol. We have one remote participant with their hand raised, that being Christina Conroy from the Victorian Society of New York. Christina Conroy, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society. Now, the work that was done in noncompliance has obliterated any sense that this is an historic building. It would not have been approved in the first interest instance. The stucco should be removed, the brick properly pointed, and the shutter pintles returned. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks so much for your testimony. I do not see any additional hands raised, so I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Two recommends approval. And with that, I'll bring it back to you, Chair Carol.
Okay. All right, so is there anything you'd like to add before we move to our discussion?
Yeah, I would just like to respond to the one testimony that was given. I think restoring the facade would require really significant material replacement to make it watertight and would not really reflect the historic nature of the building that I think the intent would be. As again, this is not visible from any street, any pedestrian walking by the building. And the commission had already approved significant changes to the rear facade, including that large stucco wall that you can see to the left of the window line. So I think the context of the courtyard has certainly changed over time. And I do think that despite this being a small stucco finish on the rear facade, that the historic nature of the building is completely kept intact, as you can see from the outside.
All right, Commissioners, any final questions? Let's move to our discussion. Commissioner Master, would you make a motion to close the hearing? Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson, would you second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we're looking at the rear facade of this building. This is a building and where the commission previously approved some work. The building had been altered prior to our last approval with this full-height addition to the left and a rooftop addition. And we had approved some stuccoing back here. And the applicants, there was a change in ownership midway and water issues, and the applicants restuccoed this or stuccoed this portion, this bay of windows on this rear facade. They have shown it's not visible from a public way. It's not really even visible from within the donut. There's not much of a donut at all. It's pretty densely built. And, but it did replace the texture of the brick and the shutter pintles. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah. I think that, you know, the this, the rear of this was so altered and it is a necessary work that I think it is appropriate in this case, and I really, I can approve it.
And it's sort of a limited piece of the wall, too, with this rear yard addition. The full-height rear yard addition really limits the amount of this rear wall.
Yeah, I think in this case, where it's located, the, it's appropriate.
Okay, Commissioner Chu?
I would agree. I think because of the scale of the addition to the rear, which blocks and leaves only one bay of existing facade exposed, but none of it even visible from the public way. And because of the maintenance issues and condition of the wall, I think it's appropriate.
Right, Commissioner Master?
I agree. It's appropriate.
Right, Commissioner Jefferson?
Because of the context and visibility, I think I can accept this.
Commissioner Goldblum?
I am reluctant to accept it, but I understand the situation and can due to the limited visibility and all that stuff. But I think these backyards do have a character that's significant. I won't oppose it, but I think it was a mistake, and I certainly wouldn't view it as precedent.
Okay, Commissioner Ginsburg?
I can accept this. It's appropriate.
All right, Commissioner Chapin, would you make the motion?
A matter of a certificate, a miscellaneous amendment, Borough of Manhattan, LPC 24-09748, 30-32 Howard Street. Soho Cast Iron Historic District, a Neo-Grec-style building designed by J.B. Snook and built in 1868. Application is to legalize the removal of shutter pintles and installation of a stucco system at the rear facade in noncompliance with Certificate of Appropriateness 17-3541. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details and sighting are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the rear facade is not visible from any public thoroughfare, that the building was highly modified pursuant to the previous approval with a full height, partial width, rear extension, and a rooftop addition with minimal setback from the rear facade, and that the modification to the remaining exposed portion of the brick facade did not cause the removal of substantial historic fabric, that the stucco cladding matches the surrounding additions in terms of material and finish, and that the work did not diminish the special architectural and historic character of the Soho Cast Iron Historic District.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second that motion?
Second.
And John, will you call the vote?
Chair Carol?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
Seven in favor and not opposed, the motion passes.
Thank you very much. Have a nice day.
You too. We'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number four, LPC 25-05551. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 557, Lot 1, 788 Broadway, the Grace Church Individual Landmark. This is a French Gothic Revival-style church building designed by James Renwick Jr. and built in 1843 to 45, with later expansions and alterations. The application is to use substitute materials for masonry restoration.
The applicant has now entered the hearing. I'm promoting you to panelist. Please state your name for the record. You may click the screen to begin. One moment.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Hi, this is Nate Schlant with Building Conservation Associates. Today, we're presenting on the masonry restoration and leak remediation at the South Isle of Grace Church, which is a historic church at 788 Broadway, designed by noted architect James Renwick Jr. and constructed in 1845. I'm Nate Schlant, a conservation architect at Building Conservation Associates. I'm here with my colleagues Michelle Boyd, the Director of Preservation Services at BCA, and Chris Kaminsky, the Director of Technical Services at BCA. We're also joined by Gene Pfeiffer, who's our Stanglass Conservator, Rihanna Murphy, the Director of Finance at Grace Church, and the Reverend Don Waring, Director of the Church, who will give a few opening comments. Don, if you can hear me? Is Don on?
Don is not on. He was previously.
Okay. Sorry. So we'll just jump in then. So the project area is limited to the south aisle of the church. It's shown in the highlighted red area in the image at the right. The scope of work includes the replacement of stone tracery units in four minimally visibly visible stained glass windows, the conservation of stained glass windows, and the installation of new protective glazing, the repair and in-kind replacement of the membrane roof over the south aisle, and additional isolated masonry repairs, which I'll discuss. Sorry, the slides aren't advancing. The project seeks to address ongoing persistent leaks, which are currently damaging original interior plaster finishes seen at the left-hand image. Through a series of investigative water tests shown center and right, BCA identified the stone tracery of the four stained glass windows as the primary source of leaks. The leaks are primarily the result of deteriorated tracery units shown at left and the units at the base of the balustrade shown right, that serve as a drip edge to redirect water away from the face of the building. These units are made from sing-sing marble, which is a, which is a material that's highly susceptible to cracks, spalls, and disaggregation. You can see those conditions in both of these photos. There are similar masonry conditions at decorative pinnacles shown left, the flat ashlar units at center, which have led to the loss of decorative ornamentation throughout the building. That's shown at right. That was after our conditions assessment. To address these issues, BCA is proposing using both limestone and cast stone to replace deteriorated units. At highly visible and ornamental features, we are proposing the use of limestone, which has been extensively used throughout the church during previous restoration campaigns. At the window tracery, which is only minimally visible from the street, and at plain units at the base of the balustrade, we are proposing the use of cast stone as a substitute material. The use of cast stone will allow the project team to fabricate the replacement units within a compressed timeframe and at a lower cost than the, than hand-carved natural stone. Limestone has already been used extensively throughout the church for previous repairs at highly visible decorative units, such as the balustrade and the tracery, which are shown left and center. The red arrows indicate previous limestone replacement units from, out of limestone. And at the flat ashlar units, which is shown at the right. Likewise, our approach proposes natural stone in areas that are visible from the street. At less visible areas, we're proposing the use of cast stone, which BCA has used successfully in previous projects to match natural stone. Shown here is the Ballantine House at the Newark Museum of Art, where the use of cast stone replacement units is imperceptible next to the original Wyoming gray sandstone. There are many precedents for the use of cast stone in ecclesiastical buildings in New York. In March of 2024, the Landmarks Preservation Commission approved new cast stone sills, lintels, and parabits at the Marble Collegiate Church located at, on West 29th Street and 5th Avenue. This graphic shows we're proposing cast stone versus limestone replacement units. Shown in red are the cast stone replacement units, which are limited to plain units at the base of the balustrade and four windows that are minimally visible from Broadway. The remaining window at the ground level, which is at the left-hand side of the elevation, was previously restored with limestone in the 1990s. The green indicates the use of limestone at ornamental units at the pinnacles and highly visible ashlar units. The blue units are units that we salvaged during our inspection and will be reinstalled as part of this project. The restoration of the four stained glass windows includes the installation of new protective glazing. The existing protective glazing shown left is highly deteriorated and allows water to enter the assembly. The new protective glazing shown at the center, this is a previously restored window, is designed to match this window. So our, our goal is to match those windows that were previously restored at ground level that have protective glazing. While we believe the new cast stone units will be a great match to the limestone replacement units used previously at Grace Church, it's important to point out that the windows in question are not, are largely not visible from Broadway or any public thoroughfare. As shown in these graphics, the windows are hidden with a small areaway formed by the chantry that's highlighted in white. That was a later addition to the church and a wall that encloses the areaway. If you see the image to the right, there's a wall that, that encloses that areaway, making those windows largely not visible from the street. Here are photographs showing the work area from Broadway. The locations of the proposed cast stone units are highlighted in red. The linear ones are the balustrade units. And then this is the window that's highlighted is the only one that's visible from the street, which are, which is largely inconspicuous. This is the only window that is visible from Broadway. The windows further east are concealed by the wall that encloses the areaway between the chantry and the south aisle. In closing, BCA has extensive experience using cast stone in similar historic buildings. In past projects, it's proven to be a suitable substitute material that performs well when exposed to weather and allows for the accurate recreation of profiled and ornamental stone units. So with that, I'll thank you for your time, and we're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Do we have questions on this application? Okay, let's move to public testimony. I know that there is, note that there is no one in the hearing room to speak on this item. So I will turn it over to Gregory Kala to help introduce our remote panelists.
Thank you, Chair Carol. The first we'll be hearing from is Christina Conroy from the Victorian Society of New York. Christina Conroy, I am promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, my testimony seems to have been written before all the information was available, but I'm reading it anyway. Past restoration campaigns at the church successfully used limestone to replace the original sing-sing marble, both flat and carved sections. Now, we think it isn't in the best interest of long-term preservation to introduce a second substitute material for the original stone. Cast stone will weather differently, no matter how good it looks at first. Matching limestone is readily available. According to the presentation, the reason for this proposed cast stone instead of limestone is a deadline for completion of December of this year. Without any description of where this deadline comes from, we can't comment on the true urgency of this schedule. In our opinion, only an extraordinary circumstance could legitimately affect such an important decision on replacement materials for a 175-year-old individual landmark. Preservation decisions of this kind should take the long view and not be based on short-term expediency. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Lucy Levine from the Historic District's Council. Lucy Levine, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Thank Commissioners. My name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic District's Council. The applicant states a compressed construction schedule with completion of all work required by December 2025 as the rationale for using cast stone to restore Grace Church, rather than the appropriate material, which is Indiana limestone. The applicant doesn't explain why there's a compressed construction schedule for restoring this individual landmark. And HDC finds that the applicant's self-imposed time constraint is not an appropriate reason to use substitute materials. HDC asks the applicant to please use Indiana limestone. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any additional hands raised, so I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Two recommends approval. And with that, I'll bring it back to you, Chair Carol.
Okay, I'd like to ask the applicants if you'd like to respond to the comments we've heard. Particularly, you know, the, it was raised by both Victorian Society of New York and Historic District's Council, the question of the compressed the question of the compressed schedule and, um, whether that alone is sufficient reason to consider an alternate material.
Yeah, hi, I'm, my name is Don Waring. I'm the rector of the church and have, uh, been here for 20 years and we're excited about working with BCA and we've done a lot of restoration over the past 20 years and, and much of what we've done has been in and around scaffolding and, uh, one reason for the compressed timeline is that we're, we're a very active and busy uh, community, uh, that, that, uh, the church is used by the Grace Church School and in, in addition to the uh, almost daily, well, really the daily use of church. And we, um, got through the fall with, uh, half the nave, the south section of the nave, uh, roped off, uh, while we were restoring the, um, uh, the, the leaks and now we're going to need to do that again. We have, um, you know, things like, uh, Easter, Christmas, school graduations, uh, coming up, all of which require or, or, or happen, uh, ho- hopefully with every seat, uh, that's available in, uh, in the church. It's also a, um, a matter of, um, of, uh, of, of cost efficiency. And it's, uh, the, the cast stone is, is much more affordable than the, the limestone. And so it's, it's time uh, and it's money. And we don't think we're compromising on, um, the, 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 the quality. I think that, um, the, the cast stone frankly may be more durable than the, uh, than, than the limestone and certainly more durable than, than the marble. If you can see, well, as Nate has showed, uh, shown some of the sections of the deteriorated marble, it, 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 it's in pretty rough shape.
Thank you very much. And, um, and, and I know that there is, uh, there are some portions that are to be replaced with new limestone, the flat units and some ornament. And, uh, the tracery is largely blocked from view by the chantry, but, um, can you ma- and maybe Nate, you can talk, speak to the, uh, balustrade, balustrade bases and, um, and the choice of cast stone there, uh, while you're doing limestone around it. And maybe also speak to the, uh, age and weathering of the cast stone versus the limestone.
Yeah, and it's similar to the tracery units. We saw that there was some efficiency in the fact that these are repetitive profiled units. And, um, we're concerned about the durability. We did at the onset of this project, we sounded all of the stone to remove loose pieces. I think you saw that in a previous photo. Um, the area that's most highly susceptible to this type of disaggregation and large spalls was the balustrade units. Um, many of them have to be replaced, especially on the south, um, on the south side, the, the balustrade units above the tracery window, the stone tracery and the stained glass windows. So because it's a repeating profiled unit, it's plain in design, it's not that visible. There was certainly efficiency in using cast stone over carved stone. That's the, um, the reasoning.
Great, thank you.
If I can say something else about the, um, the, uh, the cost of this, if you look at the lower, uh, right, the picture on the right, uh, down below, you see, uh, a pile of stones. And, uh, those are, are stones that were deemed to be unsafe and they needed to come down. And the, the, the hard truth is, is that we can't afford to put them up, to put them back up, uh, because they've been so deteriorated. And we would, um, i- it's very, very costly to, uh, get them carved again and, uh, and, and put them up. And so, uh, we're committed a- a- and, and we raised a lot of money last spring. We, we raised just over $5 million and we've got a lot of exterior work that needs to happen on the parish house and the rectory on the other side uh, of, of the church. And what we found with the South Isle is that it is swallowing up all of the money we raised to do other projects as well. And so, um, for windows that no one will see, uh, to, uh, to make those so expensive that we can do nothing else is only going to increase the stone piles. There's another one on the other side of the church as well. So you say, we, we want you to play the long game. Believe me, we are playing the long game here. We want Grace Church to be here and looking, uh, every bit, uh, that it looks now, uh, 212 years from now. We're, we're 200, 270, 200 and with the congregation is 217 years old, the building, uh, 179. We, we want the building here 179 years from now, not as a repurposed event space, but as Grace Church in the city of New York. So we are playing the long game and we are trying to raise as much as we can and do what we can uh, to prevent further deterioration. But it's a big campus and we have a lot to do.
Thank you very much for that context. Yes, Commissioner Jefferson.
So, let's see, you have it clear. The criteria for locating the limestone or the cast stone is based on visibility only.
It's.
Nate, I'll let you respond.
And, and the, the question of durability, uh, cast stones 50 years old or 60 or 70, I, it's, the durability is the same or the, the, the quality over time is the same. There must be studies that say limestone over 75 years. This is what happens to it. I didn't see any of that in the report.
That's a question of the, the age and weathering of the two different materials.
First, did you want to respond? We were talking.
Um, I, I was, I was going to respond to something else that was said earlier. Um, this is Chris Kaminsky from Building Conservation Associates. I'm the technical director there.
Just a little louder. It's hard to hear you in here.
Um, sure. Uh, I'm Chris Kaminsky. I am the technical director at BCA. And I just wanted to add that one of the things we are considering is the deteriorated condition of the sing sing marble. Um, it is, um, a similar marble to Tucuhoe and it comes from the same region in New York. And it's highly susceptible to deterioration in, um, ornamentally carved areas. One of our concerns is when we start the work, um, the spaces that we're trying to insert new Dutchman will increase because of the deterioration of the stone on either end. Cast stone gives us the opportunity to, um, cast the units that are repetitive in longer lengths and then cut them to size as the openings, um, are excavated. Now, we do plan on cutting out, um, and, uh, you know, trying to get an estimate of, of the exact size of these units, um, that we need. But we do anticipate that there will be a variability that we'll have to compensate for. And if we, um, pre-cut stone and then end up with sections where the stone is no longer big enough because of the deterioration, um, we feel that that would be, um, a detriment to the project and, um, therefore cast stone seems to be, or is a better, um, solution. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions, Commissioner Chu?
Yeah, um, yeah, and I, I guess it's a question for BCA again and related to Arada's question. I, can you address specifically because cast stone, natural material has been tried and tested and we know in the last hundred plus years. Um, there are things that are great about the natural material. If there's chipping, these things are, it doesn't, it's not so evident. Cast stone is essentially got cement. There's a big portion of it is concrete cement, um, makeup. So will could discolor with time. So I, I do think the visibility here is the, the biggest issue. Obviously, the, the natural material is the preferred replacement. There are differences. Um, it is durable in our practice, cast stone. It, it, it can, uh, last a long time. But when it's damaged, it's, it's like repairing concrete. You gotta chip, right? It's, it's a different kind of animal. So visually, I can expect that there might be dis-color difference with time, uh, wearing of, of the material. I'd like BCA to just address that. Because it is, the, the point being made is there's only a portion visible, I think, is, is the argument here, too.
Yeah. So does someone from BCA want to again speak to that?
Let me just bu- build on that with a, a question. Would, would Stevens and Arada's, uh, uh, issues be addressed in some way? And would it be technically feasible to do this to use the material, the original, the original stone material or marble as an aggregate base or as, you know, a ground up sand base? So that instead of using sand, you're using, you know, the stuff so that if it did chip, it would have a consistency through, throughout that would potentially be more, uh, similar to the, uh, original.
Chris, Chris, you're muted.
So Nate or Chris, you want to take that, please?
Um, as far as using, uh, ground stone as an aggregate, um, I do not know that we would be able to do that from a cast stone association, um, standard requirements for how we manufacture and fabricate cast stone. Um, what our intention of doing was to, um, closely match the, uh, existing limestone that is on the building, um, with the anticipation of, um, you know, uh, anything matching any different, uh, uh, installation of repairs. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Yeah, the coloration.
I think if, if you, um, Nate, can you go back to the slide? Oh, the coloration over time. Um, I think that we have an issue with the coloration over time on any material that we use.
It's a factor, I guess that's what Chris is saying.
So, well, that is true. I mean, even if, uh, if you replace the stone with new stone, it would be weathering at a different rate, which would have a variation.
I think that's even visible in this photo where limestone was previously, um, approved as an alternative material. But upon close inspection, you can, you can see that materially, you can see the difference. Um, even though it is a natural material.
And I can confirm from other projects that we've worked on, such as the appellate courthouse, where we, um, used, we, we went to Italy, got the original marble and used that. And, um, it looked very good when we first, uh, cleaned the building, um, and everything matched in color, but the weathered original stone on the, um, building was darkened much more quickly than the new, um, elements, uh, that we installed. So then all of a sudden the repairs became quite visible. Um, so I would not recommend using salvaged sing sing because of its characteristics and, um, I think that we can get a very good color match with cast stone.
Uh, one other thing just, uh, to keep in mind, and, and I'm stating the obvious here, is that Grace Church did not descend all in one piece at one time. And it's, it's, it, it has evolved and grown over the years. The chantry, uh, is an addition. The stone spire is an addition. Uh, the whole parish house was, uh, an addition, uh, that came, that came later using various, um, uh, types of stone and, and, um, uh, and the interior of the building, um, the, the, uh, you can see where here was a, a restoration project that happened and they did this with the plaster and here is a, a, a different time when the plaster was scored differently. And you can, you can see one thing that I think is fun about Grace Church on the inside and the outside is that you can, you can see the evolution of the building over time. It's never been one single static thing.
You, Commissioner Chapin?
I was just going to comment on, that, that my understanding is the visibility is of these windows is almost completely obscured by, uh, the chantry building. You know, there's one little top of one of the windows that's shown from the presentation.
Okay, any other questions? All right, so let's, um, move to our discussion. Uh, Commissioner Jefferson, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Sure.
Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the hearing's closed and we'll begin our discussion, um, on the, um, material choices for Grace Church. And I do want to thank the church for being here today and thank you Reverend for your input. And, um, we do recognize that, um, that you have been an incredible steward of this, this church complex. And, um, and we know that sometimes these, um, religious building types are very complex and, and complicated to maintain. And we know that it's for many religious institutions, it's, uh, very challenging to do that. There are unique challenges as a nonprofit to be able to meet the demands of an architecturally complex building. So we do appreciate your stewardship here and long-term care. And the commission has a history of, um, approving limestone as a replacement material for the Tucuhoe marble. Um, and we've done it here as well as other individual landmarks, finding that it is a sufficient match. And I think what the church has done is they have really sort of prioritized across the, the campus is really to, um, ensure that they are taking, uh, a very careful and thoughtful approach. Um, and I think, you know, also working with a very expert consultant and team here. Um, and so they are prioritizing certain areas to be replaced in limestone as we've approved in the past and asking for limited discreet areas to be replaced in cast stone. And that's really the window tracery for the windows that are largely obscured by the chantry. So you just see the top arch of the one. And then for the balustrade bases at the top, which are also very discreet, simple, plain, uh, and repetitive elements. And, um, so with that, we'll start our discussion. Commissioner Chu, would you like to start this one?
Yes, sure. Um, I think this is an interesting case and I do think that the strategy being, um, deployed here by the, by the proposal is a smart one. And they're, they're showing that the Dutchman and, and the natural stone is being used in all the visible areas of the building, probably visible areas of replacement needed. And that this, uh, what's being proposed is a replacement of material or a cast stone at, at areas that are not very visible or minimally visible. Um, I do think it raises a big question that, at least in my head, about technology and products that, that we have today that we didn't have before that can help with challenges like schedule, um, phasing, construction and complexity of what would have been originally hand carved stone Dutchman. Um, and I do think it is, um, something that we need to embrace. We need to, to think about how these changes in technology, uh, can affect our historic structures. And I've seen this in many areas and different applications where we are allowing, um, certain things that maybe in the past were, were not considered, uh, acceptable. I think in this case, I would, I would vote that this is appropriate as proposed because of, of what I had said in terms of the general respect to this, um, amazing building and the care that the consultant, a very highly skilled consultant is, is approached and is addressing the issue. I just ask that they work closely with staff on the final matching of the cast stone to the historic facade, existing natural stone.
Okay. Commissioner Master?
Yeah, I, I agree with Commissioner Chu. Um, I do have to commend the applicant, um, for being such, um, careful, thoughtful stewards of this beautiful building. I think this presentation was extremely well thought out in terms of where do you put the limestone in places that are more visible and more decorative, um, versus the cast stone? Um, and in this situation with these windows that are, um, pretty much not visible, um, I think it makes a lot of sense, um, to do the cast stone. Um, and, um, yeah, I think, uh, I think it was very, very well done and I am supportive of this.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
Of course, it's very well thought through, carefully done. I, my, I can approve this. The only issue I had, I wish I'd seen more information about thicknesses of the limestone and thicknesses of the concrete. So that I could tell by just the weight of it, if it's appropriate or not. So I could make a judgment, but I don't have that.
Good point. Thank you.
I can approve.
Okay. Commissioner Goldblum?
I think it's, uh,
I think it's, uh, appropriate. I think I agree with Stephen has said.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Agree with the other commissioners, appropriate.
Okay. So I think we, um, have a consensus to approve this and we'll just, as always, ask that they continue to work with the staff on final review and approval. Sorry. I was thinking you were reading it.
I can.
Sorry, go ahead. Commissioner Chapin?
Okay. Uh, I agree with my fellow commissioners, which is that, uh, uh, you know, it's a pressing need to preserve this building. Uh, I appreciate that, uh, the church is really working diligently to take care of this individual landmark, which is extremely important. And we have previously approved, uh, limestone and they're discreetly applying the limestone. And in the case of the cast stone, I think very little will be visible. And, uh, we have definitely approved cast stone previously on other landmarks where the visibility was, uh, you know, relatively small. So I can approve this.
Yes. Thank you very much. And thank you for pointing out that we have approved cast stone in other instances as a replacement material. All right. Commissioner Chu will do an approval. Thanks.
Okay. In the case of LPC 2505551788 Broadway, Grace Church, individual landmark, a French Gothic Revival style church building designed by James Reznik Renwick Jr. and built in 1843 to 45 with later expansions and alterations. Application is to use substitute materials for masonry restoration. Uh, I recommend approval, finding that the deteriorated conditions of select decorative stone elements, including parts of a pinnacle and window tracery are severe and require immediate intervention to make them safe. That the use, I'm sorry, my voice is losing my voice. That the use of cast stone for tracery in specific window locations along the south aisle be minimally visible from the street, that the cast stone will match the profiles, details and texture of historic stone and will be colored to match limestone previously used at other window traceries, that the Indiana limestone as replacement material has been approved by the commission and used extensively on this building and past restorative campaigns since mid 1990s and was selected due to difficulty in finding the appropriate match for the original sing sing marble. Similarity of stones in terms of color and texture and the strength and durability of the limestone exceeding that of the marble, therefore its continued use as a flat replacement unit on the facades will limit the variety of stone types to those proven to be successful match. And that the work will, sorry.
Sorry.
And that the work will address an unsafe condition and will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the individual landmark.
Thank you. Commissioner Master, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right. John, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Master? Seven in favor, none opposed. The motion passes.
All right. That's approved. Thank you. And we'll move to the next item.
Thank you.
Next item is public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
LPC 24-11114. This is an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 583, lot 29, 32 Morton Street, AKA 38-47th Avenue South and 59 to 61 Bedford Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District. This is a loft building designed by Hobart B. Upjohn, built in 1920 to 29 and altered in 1957. The application is to install rooftop mechanical equipment.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nice to be here. Uh, my name is Walter Sedovic. I'm the principal of Walter Sedovic Architects' Modern Ruins. I want to begin first by acknowledging the very productive discussions and insights offered by commission staff, particularly Carol Ann Passion and Jared Knowles. I think it's very important to recognize, uh, how important their participation has been to this. 32 Morton needs a new cooling tower. 32 Morton is the original home of the Upjohn Pharmaceutical Company, built in 1919 and then expanded vertically in 1927. In 1981, it was converted to co-ops. The cooling tower that's presently in place dates to that conversion period specifically to 1981, and it is long past its projected performance life. It is no longer hygienic. It has deteriorated interiorly. It's open to the atmosphere. It's not code compliant. It is not energy efficient. And it does not assist us in any way. In fact, it's detrimental to attaining the goals of the building, New York City, and the nation towards environmental stewardship. The proposed unit is produced by Baltimore Air Coil, BAC. You've seen hundreds of these scattered around New York City. It is an enclosed unit, meaning it's insulated, it's not open to the atmosphere, it's highly energy efficient, and it does contribute in a very significant way to meeting environmental stewardship goals. Does all the things that we want it to do. In terms of its positioning, this is the original or the present roof plan, uh, south to the bottom. The existing cooling tower is, uh, located there, uh, dotted in. Uh, to the north is the penthouse. The northern half of the roof is designated residential. It's private. Uh, to the west is, uh, the cutout there is for, uh, fire egress. It's emergency egress from all floors of the building. Uh, in the center is the elevator, two elevator shafts, one for service, one for, uh, passenger. Uh, to the right, the skylight encloses the emergency stair from the interior of the building. Second means of egress. The water tank is center with the big circle, and that's the general layout. Where we have proposed this new unit is tucked into the existing infrastructure. There are myriad reasons why we selected this location. We had to discount the south where the existing cooling tower resides because it is the most visible location from any vantage point on the building. Even if it were an available and appropriate location, it's adjacent to the, um, flue of the boiler, uh, which is a permanent fixture and thus, uh, not code compliant. Uh, to the west, uh, there's not technically enough physical area, but even if there were, we'd have four legs coming down for dunage plus five individual, uh, large diameter pipes which would block the, um, egress, uh, in that cutout. The north, as I'd mentioned, is, uh, is designated, uh, private residential. So this is an ideal location because we can couple our dunage onto the existing frame for the water tower. And we can incorporate the two southern columns into the existing wall for the emergency egress that's central to the building. And all four of those columns line up perfectly with the existing 1919 and 1927 building steel frame. So there's no modification to the structural system of the building that's required, uh, by this placement. We've oriented the short side to the closest parapet, uh, which faces Seventh Avenue. And, uh, all of the piping is tucked away between the two legs nearest the cooling tower. Uh, so it's completely out of the way. Its height is designated to, um, conform to two competing, uh, needs. One is clear access for egress from the roof, and we've accomplished that. Uh, there, there are no pipes, there are no legs in the way of the egress. The, you, you, uh, walk under the cooling tower. And, uh, the sound attenuation requirements of New York City for residential, it's situated exactly at the height of the eve of the roof of the penthouse and therefore as low as we can possibly make it. This is the existing roof conditions looking in various directions. So you get a good sense of the open space between the two legs, uh, southern legs of the water tower toward the, uh, emergency egress route. And the existing cooling tower, which is not a small affair, uh, that's shown in the lower left, second from the left, and in the upper right, uh, furthest to the right. These are our mockups. The, uh, the unit and the modeling that we've proposed exactly conform to these mockups. These are a variety of view sheds, uh, to the left in triplex, to the left, the existing condition. Center is the mockup and to the right, the modeled unit in place. And I, I will go on record to attest that, uh, we have, uh, a handful of images shown here. Um, we considered about 18 or so view sheds. Um, these are the most egregious. Uh, everything else you really don't see very much. Uh, so these are definitely the worst case scenario all the way around. This is looking, uh, toward Bedford, uh, from across Seventh Avenue, looking west. This is looking from the south, uh, almost directly north, again, from Seventh Avenue. The right is the modeled unit in place. This is looking toward, from Carmine, towards, uh, Seventh Avenue, looking directly west. And this is looking far south up Seventh Avenue. Uh, the view shed extends, uh, quite a ways, but this was sort of the sweet spot where it begins to diminish, uh, further south begins to diminish into the overall back backdrop of the village. Uh, an accumulation of similar types of infrastructure and equipment in the near vicinity of 32 Morton. An aerial view of the modeled unit from each cardinal point. So you can see that it's nice and clear beneath it, uh, for egress, which was a huge consideration. And, uh, again, situated as low as we could possibly get it. It's nicely coupled, at least we, that was our intent, um, with the water tower or the water tank, which we all love. And these are the aesthetic considerations. The BAC unit is a mill finish stainless steel unit, meaning it's non-corrosive. It's not shiny. It's, uh, the color of a nickel. And so we complemented that color with the dunage for the, uh, cooling tower and, uh, uh, if we gain approval, would consider, would continue that color scheme for the existing dunage under the water tank. Uh, that warm gray tends to blend very well with the background as well as, uh, with the sky looking upward. Uh, all of the platforms are open grading. The interesting thing about this situation is that because we've coupled onto the water tank dunage, the busy side of the water tank faces the water or of the cooling tower faces the water tank. So you don't see all of that. It also allows us to share ladders and access platforms for ongoing maintenance with the water tank that already exists. So it cuts those down by a significant number. Um, the paint is that warm gray that you see in the center and all of the rails for the required maintenance platforms are cable rails. So they're very, very transparent. That is, uh, the conclusion of our presentation.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, Commissioners? All right. Let's see if we have any public testimony. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I'll turn it over to Gregory to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. We do not have any remote participants with their hands raised. If you'd like to speak on this item, please click the raise hand button now. Noting that there are still no hands raised, I will state for the record that Manhattan Community Board Two recommends approval. And with that, I'll bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
Okay. So supportive testimony. I'm not sure if, um, there's much to respond to, but if there's any final statement you'd like to make before we move to our discussion, you're welcome to. Thank you. All right. So we'll move to our discussion. Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second that?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. I want to thank you for a thoughtful presentation. It was very clear. This is for a new cooling tower, um, nestled next to the existing water tower. Um, the building is taller than many of the others. And so there are views of this as well as the other rooftop accretions on the building. And so we'll discuss that today. Commissioner Master, would you like to start this one?
Sure. Um, I, I think the, uh, important thing here is that the, um, the water tower is so highly visible. Um, and, uh, because they're marrying it with it, I think that, um, it makes, even though it's visible, I think it kind of reduces the, um, I don't know, the impact, shall we say, of it. Um, and so, you know, I, I think this is necessary. I think they've shown that, um, you know, what they're putting up there is very necessary. So I can find this appropriate.
Commissioner Jefferson?
It's, as an architect, it, it takes contact. It takes, um, engineering and function and put it together to create this element in grouping. But it's quite, quite interesting on the top of this building. Um, the materiality of the, of the cooling tower, the neutral metal finish really adds to, to make the composition work very well.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree. I think it's appropriate.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Uh, a very good presentation and appropriate.
Commissioner Chapin?
Uh, I agree with my fellow commissioners. That is appropriate.
Okay. Commissioner Chu?
Yes, I, I agree. And what an incredibly detailed presentation for the mechanical. I think that answers any questions we might have had.
Exactly. All right. So I think we're all in agreement. And again, thank you for the detailed presentation. Um, Commissioner Master, would you make a motion?
In the matter of LPC dash 24 dash 11114, 32 Morton Street, AKA 38 dash 47th Avenue South and 59 dash 61 Bedford Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District, a loft building designed by Hobart B. Upjohn, built in 1920 to 29 and altered in 1957. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Greenwich Village Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features that given the scale of the building and its existing collection of rooftop accretions, the cooling tower and platform will not overwhelm the building or the roof scape. That although the cooling tower and platform will be visible along Seventh Avenue South and other public thoroughfares, it will be seen in the context of other utilitarian rooftop accretions. That the proposed cooling tower and platform will be installed adjacent to the existing prominent water tank and platform and will have a neutral fit metal finish to harmonize with it and the lower bulkheads, helping the installation to recede from view. And that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or Greenwich Village Historic District.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
So second.
Thank you. John, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed. The motion passes.
Right. That's approved. Thank you. All right. And we'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number six, LPC 25 dash 04686, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 639, lot 1, 53 Bethune Street, AKA 155 Bank Street, the Bell Telephone Laboratories Complex Individual Landmark. This is a neoclassical style office and factory building designed by Mackenzie Voorhees and Melon and built in 1924 to 26, part of a complex of buildings. part of a complex of buildings altered in 1968 to 70 by Richard Meyer for conversion into artists' residential and work-studio units and related spaces. And the application is to replace special windows.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Adam Poole. I'm here with Craig Tuman from CTA Architects for Westbeth Artist Housing to talk about window replacement. Use the arrows to advance. Thank you. Westbeth is a complex of eight buildings, mostly constructed as offices and a factory for the Western Electric Company and later Bell Telephone Laboratories between 1860 and 1929. They were converted to artist's studio housing and community space by Richard Meyer in 1968 as one of the nation's first such industrial-to-residential conversions. The entire city block was designated an individual landmark in 2011. Particular building we're presenting today is the H Building at the corner of Bethune and Washington Streets, built in 1924 and modified in 1931 to accommodate the High Line. Our proposed work requiring an LPC public hearing is replacement of 28 double-hung steel windows at the top floor with new steel windows, 20 of which are considered special windows because they have true arched tops. These windows are original to the building and in poor shape. Most of them don't open or close completely and are rusted through in places. They also exhibit the thermal performance issues of any solid steel-framed, single-pane window. The new windows will be thermally broken with insulated glazing. They will look very similar, but we are proposing to change the operation from double-hung to fixed overhopper. The main reason is that double-hung steel windows are not commercially available with a thermally broken frame, which we need to meet modern performance standards and avoid condensation issues. The top-floor windows outlined in red are designed differently from the rest of the building and set back at the street facades in a way that makes them less visible from the street. This space was designed as a conference hall for Bell Labs and is now used as a dance studio. Here are some context photos, historic and present, from the north, from the south, the east, the west. South return. Some close-up photos from the exterior. And here's an example of a similar conversion at a former loft building on West 26th Street, not a landmark, but the same manufacturer that we will use, Optimum Windows. Except when the windows are open, the change in operation is minimally visible. In this plan, you can see the location of the 28 window replacements, proposed and existing elevations. And window schedule showing that we will replicate the true arched head of the steel windows. And of course, the details. The new window frames are all custom. They will closely match the depth dimensions and have simulated divided lights at the mountains. In the end, the proposed replacements and change of window operation will have a very minimal effect on the appearance, while vastly improving the window's performance for the comfort of those inside for maintenance and for energy efficiency. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Yes, Commissioner Jefferson?
The hopper windows, are they there for the air conditioning?
The hopper windows are there to make them open.
You're going to have air conditioners coming out of them?
No, actually, those will be replaced at some point within air conditioning.
An internal?
Yes.
Internal, okay.
Mechanical system.
But for now, okay, fine.
So for, yeah, so when you replace the windows and you have the in-swinging lower sash, how will you accommodate air conditioning until that internal system can be developed?
This, it will be developed in another project to happen at the same time.
Okay.
Not part of this application.
Got it. All right, any other questions? Okay, let's see if we have any public testimony. And I'll note there is no one in the hearing room to speak, so we'll turn it to Gregory to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. We have one remote participant with their hand raised, that being Chloe Gregoire from Village Preservation. Chloe Gregoire, I'm promoting you to panelist. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good day, commissioners. My name is Chloe Gregoire, and I'm speaking on behalf of Village Preservation. Village Preservation supports the effort to improve the performance of these windows while replicating historic detail. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any additional hands raised, so I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board II recommends approval. And with that, I'll bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
Okay, thank you. So supportive testimony, is there anything else you'd like to add before we move to our discussion? Okay, any final questions, commissioners? All right, then we'll move to our discussion. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you make a motion? Commissioner Chapin, would you second the motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so this is to replace the windows at the top setback floor, the 11th floor, with windows that match the configuration and details of the historic windows, but with a change in operation to increase energy performance. And this is very similar to windows we've approved at other building types. And in fact, in some cases, the staff can approve. This is before us because it's an individual landmark. So Commissioner Jefferson, would you like to start this one?
I can approve this. It makes sense, rational. Yes, I can approve this.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
I agree also. Another thorough presentation. Thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I agree.
And Commissioner Chu?
Agreed.
Commissioner Master?
Agreed.
Yeah, and I think because of the, you know, this is something that we have found to be appropriate in many building types. Here it's at a setback floor, so it's partially obscured, but, you know, very consistent with our findings that it would otherwise replicate the window and the change in operation would be minimally perceptible. So Commissioner Jefferson, would you make the motion?
In the matter of LPC-25-04686, individual landmark. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed 606 simulated double-hung steel windows in straight and arch-headed configuration will closely match with historical, with historic windows in terms of detail, configuration, material, and finish, that the change in operation of the windows at the 11th floor setback, to be an in-swing hopper will only be perceptible with the lower sash is open, and that the lower sash of windows along the Washington and Bethune Streets are partially concealed by the decorative parapet of the street facade, that the glazing in the upper sash would be in a different plane from the glazing in the lower sash and will recall the appearance of historic offset window sashes, and that the work will not detract from the special architectural, historical, historic character of the individual landmark.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion?
Second.
John, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed. The motion passes.
Okay, thank you. And that's approved. Thank you very much. So we will break for lunch now, and we will come back at 12:30. And we'll ask all members of the public who are on Zoom to voluntarily exit the meeting at this time so that should you wish to return, you don't have any technical difficulties that might arise if we have to remove you. And we'll see everybody at 12:30.